Can you call the roll? Mr. Clerk, sorry. All right. All right. It's a habit. You get into this stuff. This order?
President.
Mr. Kelly?
President.
Mr. Go. Mr. Ma.
President.
Ms. Paula Strini?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
President.
Okay. All right, now that we have a quorum, let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, you will see the meeting minutes from February 17, 2022 in our agenda of national week. Please review them for any additions, revisions, or corrections. So, wait, let's do public comments first. Lee, you cluster. Mr. Clerk. Do we have anyone sent to speak the same name?
We do, Scott McBride.
Okay.
How are you guys doing tonight?
Good.
Good.
Oh, not too bad. One thing I wanted to speak on was, I know we've got a big development coming in with townhomes, and I just wanted to put some information out there for the board, so you guys were fully educated on everything, not saying that you're not, but just some supplemental information for you guys to look at and to think about when it comes to the sprinklering of the townhomes and everything. I've got some packets here that if you don't mind, I'll pass out to you guys real quick. So, there was a couple of organizations where I got this information from. One of them is NIPSA, which is in order in Illinois Sprinker Board Association Board. And then the other one would be from the Home Fire Sprinkler Coalition. And they've got some different stuff in there regarding sprinklers, not only for church media, but also for townhome sites. Well, I'm thoroughly excited to see Hampshire start growing and getting going with things. I think we really need to take a look at it, and as far as four on the life safety aspect, too. Some of the things going on here with the newer homes is we've got the lightweight construction and in added with that, the furniture that everybody is buying and putting in the homes, it's been changing everything to be quicker ignited and less time, less time to be able to get out and quicker for the structure to fail once it is caught on fire. We have been extremely lucky in this community. I know we haven't had, knock on wood, we haven't had any issues like that. I don't want to jinx that, but it can happen to anybody at any time. In the packets there, there's some statistics in there. There's also some local Illinois-based sprinkler saves that are in there as well. One of the other things that I'll get to in a little bit is some of the builder incentives that go along with having this sprinkler systems in there. So there's different things that we can do as a community to be able to make it a little bit more enticing for the builders as well. So obviously, the first page, looking at this, it's just going through, and it's kind of highlighting the points of what the sprinkler system is and why it's important besides just having smoke detection in there. Like I was talking about earlier with the newer homes, with the lightweight construction, we're also looking at that open floor plan. We've got the big, large areas of furniture and whatnot to be able to be in there. It's not like the small rooms like of yesterday where the smoke detection was in there and the smoke detection went on almost instantly. We've got the bigger rooms for it to develop more. It gets bigger about every 30 seconds, a fire develops in size. So if you take that into consideration, as well as for the fire department to be able to get out to the premises, those are some of the key factors to look at and to think about. So, one other, a couple of other things to look at, too, is because we have in our ordinances that sprinklers are required, there are some things that change with that when it comes to ISO ratings. So out there in the ISO ratings for the building code effectiveness, if we have adopted a sprinkler code to that and we fail to enforce that, the IRC or some of the insurance companies could potentially not pay out what they would need to pay. So there's, that would be, it's actually not in your brochure, that's just one of my speaking points that I hold. But, so, that's kind of one of those things looking at there. Also, the National Flood Insurance Coram also takes a look at that as well, and there's some other classifications that are under there. By no means a flood insurance guy, so I'm not going to try to sell you on that and tell you what the benefits on that side are. I just want you guys to know that those are two things that would potentially be affected. And then some of the other things that they've had, just looking at the overall in some of the paperwork, most of these communities around that have put sprinkler ordinances in place, Illinois is an overall of 4% in their, in their building increase on built. With 100 communities or so that have sprinkler systems in there, they're at a 6%. I know it's not a huge percentage, but it's an increased percentage of building. There are nine basic incentives, if you will. So the street width can be reduced in size, dead-end streets can be longer, T-turnarounds can be permitted, increased street grades and building setbacks can be permitted, additional units be permitted within the area, expansion of existing water supply may not be needed due to the lessening of what the damage would be. So if you think about what a fire department puts on the water versus a fire sprinkler system, it's night and day. You're talking about a single head that goes off when it's, you know, in a contained area, it's putting out about seven gallons per minute, whereas when the fire department gets on scene and we're putting it out with that and it's gone, you know, gone further, you're looking at 250 gallons a minute that's being put on that fire. So there's a bunch of different things in there that were, the increased hydrant spacing is another one, subdivision, single access points is another bonus that they get, being able to have a gated community if that was what was chosen to be, and then also a reduction on basement windows as well. So those are some of the nine points, and those are from the Home Fire Sprinkler Coalition, and that's on a national basis going off of the IBC codes. I know we're on one of the older codes, but we also do have that sprinkler ordinance that's in place there. So in that second package that's just got the three pages, it kind of has a little overlay of what some of the different incentives that are for, I'm sorry, guys, if you guys want one of those.
Thank you.
So that way, those are some of the things that you guys can look at, and nationally, if you look at a little bit more research, there's other incentives that the communities out there have done for getting the sprinklers put in. We're a small community right now, but we have the ability here real quick in the future to explode. And like I said, I know we've been safe so far, but at any point in time, that can change, and I would really hate to see by not putting the sprinklers in that be the case in my, you know, that we have worst-case scenario of fatality, you know? And obviously, at that point, it's too late to really do anything with that, other than move forward from there. If anybody's got any questions, I'm more than happy to answer any for you, but that's all I got for you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else signed up to speak? Mr. Rock, thank you for joining us tonight. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'm saving.
How about, how about, how about Mr. Marak? All right.
I'm saving for special occasion.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hedges, you're up.
First thing we'd like to.
Minutes. We've got to do the minutes. All right, so the meeting minutes from February 17, 2022 are in front of you guys. Take a look and see if there's any changes that you would like to make, or you would like to accept them as presented. If there are no changes, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Don't move.
Second, questions, comments? Mr. Clerk? Ms. Clerk?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Ma?
Aye.
Ms. Paula Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Pass six zero. Okay, Mr. Hedges?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now I'd like to introduce John Cassidy, who's with Industrial Equity Partners. John is now managing and developing the, what we've known as the Hampshire Logistics Park, and there's his presentation on the screen, which you can see, and he's going to talk about Vista Transportation and some other prospects that he has in the park.
Thank you. Jay mentioned, my name is John Cassidy. I represent the development group, is looking at developing Hampshire Logistics Park, which I think most of you probably, there's a lot of history with this property, I'm sure you know where it is, but basically, it's 84 acres just south of I-90 on the east side of Route 20. We're looking to bring this finally to life. We are planning to move forward with several different properties within it. It's 84 acres, 61 net developable. We would have an extension of, whether it's Gas Road or whatever it will be called, the roadway coming into the east there and cul-de-sacking, which would open up the eastern portion of the property. They can move to the next. Yeah, go one more, please. This shows a conceptual development plan. At this point in time, the three buildings you see up front here are conceptual, so the fourth building is actually the Vista Trans, proposed Vista Trans property, which is a, I think they were established, what, in 2010? Transportation company, but this would be, is they're basically their US headquarters. They also have headquarters up in Canada. We act as a maintenance facility, a dispatch facility, and then they have a small kind of cross dock, the docks on either side of the building for a small warehouse portion of their operation. So as we move through the development, we would look to do similar projects. These would all be precast concrete. I've got some renderings I'll show you in a few minutes. Precast concrete buildings that essentially are somewhere, as shown here, somewhere between 40,000 and 60,000 square foot footprints. A lot of these, a lot of the office components, which are obviously along the fronts of the building, will be, you know, with these two-story, we've seen several of these projects in other communities. You can skip forward a little bit, show you one more. Yeah, so this shows you, this is a rendering of the Vista Trans, proposed Vista Trans property. There's another, there's two actual properties just like this that are being developed in Elgin on Big Timber just west of Randall Road. One is Gold Coast Logistics, and the other one is Maybach. Very similar, they tend to all be operationally about the same in nature, where you have a smaller footprint building, but then there's quite a bit of parking for trucks as well as automobiles. Now with Vista Trans, this isn't a heavy back-and-forth type of movement with their trucks, these are long haul, they're out for what, how long usually?
I think typically the trucks will come back about once per quarter for running the maintenance.
Right, so they're on the road, they come back, the maintenance, you know, the truckers obviously need a, you know, break of sorts, et cetera, so that's what this serves at. It serves as a purpose, and then the main purpose of it, but also the main dispatch of the building is, of the operations within the building as well. For the next slide. You can go on. So this gives you a little bit of detail on Vista Trans themselves, they're established in 2010. You go to the next slide, it shows some of their current customers. Again, this would be their flagship building, headquarters building, they actually have, they cover 48 states, including Canada. They have 105 full-time employees and currently have about 320 trucks on the road and 410 trailers. You know the next one, Jay. This shows some of their customers, obviously, pretty big name brands here, Amazon, FedEx, Starbucks, UPS, et cetera. You know the next one.
Can you guarantee Starbucks in town if they come?
Maybe, maybe.
You can get right out of the truck.
So this gives you some of the, yeah, this gives you some of the detail on the building size. This may vary slightly, we're between about 45 and 60,000 square feet right now, but this shows 45,000, about 10,000 to 20,000 square feet of it is that cross-dock component I referenced. You can see as proposed, there's 257 onsite truck parking spaces, about 117 car parks, and then they'll have approximately 64 current full-time employees. You know the next one, Jay. This is the, is a rendering, but this building is actually built. This is the Gold Coast Logistics Building. You can see a lot of glass line, et cetera. This is off of Big Timber, as I mentioned before, just west of Randall Road in Elgin. It was just completed and directly across the street. It's almost, it's almost an identical replica, so if you ever had a chance to drive there, you can take a look at it. And then there's a similar building that's being built just across the street from Maybach that's about the same size, right? Pretty much the same kind of footprint and feel, et cetera. Go to the next one. I don't want to get into like all of the marketplace trends, et cetera, but we're seeing a very strong demand, and if you guys can imagine with the e-commerce component out there right now, everybody wants their, you know, sofa, you know, yesterday afternoon, right? We're getting accustomed to that, that there's a strong, strong need for these types of facilities. We're seeing them, basically, a lot of the areas within the O'Hare Market where they had traditionally been are getting redeveloped, and they just need more space in general. And so Elgin, along with Aurora and some other communities, have been planning for some of these types of transportation-related parks where these users can come out and build what they need to be able to expand and continue to serve, obviously, their client base, et cetera. You can keep going, I covered most of that. This is an elevation just that has been established. We, it's been designed, the building's been designed, and we just, we just came to a rough agreement on the site plan itself, but this gives you an idea what the elevations are going to look like. This is a site plan of the building itself. You can see that there, right now, as proposed, it's just shy of 8,000 feet of office, 16 or 17,000 square foot cross-dock warehouse. This is your repair bay, so there'll be drive-in doors, basically, where you can drive the trucks into the building, they can work on them, service them, et cetera, and then drive back out. And then there's a wash bay on the far end of the building there as well. So, I don't know if there's any additional questions that anybody has with regards to the project. We do expect that there would be a lot of interest. We have some other interested prospects, companies on our other sites, but, you know, our plan would be to move forward as quickly as we possibly could to try and break ground as early as later on in this year, to try and deliver some of these facilities in time for, you know, what the corporations are looking for. There's a lot, there's a lot of demand, and we're going to try and, we're going to try and move that, so.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy? This is just a, kind of what we've been doing, just informative of the project, upcoming project, they would still have to go through all the formal processes, this is just to kind of keep the board in the loop as to what's going on. Is there anything that you need to add into this?
No, I said just a brief introduction is all, no action required tonight.
Thank you so much for your time and thank you for coming.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on just a second, I'm sorry. If you guys want to, if you guys want to make your graceful exit. Thank you.
Thanks. I apologize, but I didn't want to, they all sat down like they were going to stay.
Thank you.
We're welcome, we're welcome.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Good night.
Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, this is a rather long resolution, so I'm going to read it to you. I'm going to ask you, for your consideration of a resolution approving an amended final plat for neighborhood M in Prairie Ridge contingent upon EEI's final review approval, plat and engineering plans, and the posting of the required construction guarantee. You have, first of all, Dan Olson is online with us today. When he speaks, you may see his picture, you may not. However, I just want to give you a couple of brief introductions. First of all, the reason for this request is they do have a potential buyer for this property, and this, this particular motion, and the next one we're going to be considering are both contingencies for that purchase. So they've asked us to consider this plat slightly before it's due, but this is not the first time we've approved class contingent on final engineering. And we do, you do have in your packet a letter from EEI on the final review, the remaining seven items that are on the final review, as well as an agenda supplement from Josh. And you also have the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, who voted 5 to 0 to support this recommendation. That we would ask for consideration.
Does anyone have any questions about the proposed resolution?
I don't know if this is a resolution question, but in the, in the minutes from Planning and Zoning, it says that there were some outstanding issues that will be able to be cleared up. Yeah, those are the same issues that I referenced, they're in, they are in the letter from EEI in the packet as well. They're still outstanding issues. There's further progress with the engineering, but they're still final reviewed.
Great, thanks. Again, Mr. Marak is present, if you have any questions about planning and zoning proceedings. Is there anything that you would like to add, Mr. Marak?
None of them, thanks, sir.
Any other questions or discussion about the proposed resolution?
I do have a question. First, Mr. Hedges, thank you for getting back to me with the plat, I really appreciate it and the additional information. In the information you had sent, you said that there was also a change in moving it from condominium-owned townhomes to be simple-townhomes, but I don't see that anywhere in the ordinance or the note from EEI or anything mentioning a switch from the two.
Tim, can you speak to how that's being done, or Mark? That section, the primary purpose for the change in plat is to move to a be simple plat.
Yeah, and I looked up to understand the difference of the two, which I completely understand, I just don't see it in the ordinance that we would be voting on or in the letter from EEI or any information provided.
Yes, that's a first thing that's come up frankly.
Jay, I can respond to that, I think.
Thank you, Dan.
So, actually, it's shown on the plat. Excuse me, normally in a condominium-type sale structure, it would be one large lot, right? And the purchaser of the condominium would not own the land below the condominium. But on the plat, you can see each, each of the units has a separate subdivision line within that beneath their unit, and that's, that's shown, that's shown on the plat. So by adopting, by approving the plat, that is addressed.
Okay, and that's the drawing that we'll address to Kelly, which was that, so just the fact that those lots are on the plat is what distinguishes it as be simple.
Right.
So, in other words, the property that you see on the original site plan that I also said, just a block, that would, that would be the plat that you'd be approving otherwise. Understood. That was approved the other year. Right, that was, that actually was approved with KNL as well, here.
Okay.
With the plan that they would come back into this amendment. Thank you, Dan.
Anyone else have any questions? I will entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 22-1, a resolution approving the amended final plat for neighborhood M in the Prairie Ridge subdivision, contingent upon EEI's review and final approval of the plat and engineering plans of the posting of the required construction guarantee. Wait a second.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or other discussion about this topic?
Yeah, I do have, I do have one. The, in the original one, it didn't outline the size of the park that is in there, and the new plat does have that center area as the park. Is that, whose responsibility is it now to maintain that middle park area that has been defined of how large that is? Is that the park district? Is that the village? Is that the homeowner association? Do we know?
I believe that's a homeowner's association park.
It, it is the master, homeowner's association will be, will own and maintain that plat. That was the original intent when we were, when we were first approved in 2005, and that's included in our, that's identified in our annexation agreement.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Dan? So I have a first and a second. Can I have a roll call of both Mr. Clerk, please? Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Ma?
Aye.
Ms. Paula Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Clerk?
Aye.
Pass one to zero.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Mayor, we would ask for your consideration of an ordinance amending the village's building regulations, removing the requirement for automated sprinkler systems in residential buildings. You have an agenda supplement in your packet from Josh. In that packet, he discusses the history of this regulation in the village, let me just summarize briefly for you. The village adopted the 2006 building code in 2008. When it adopted that code, it also adopted an addendum, which included the requirement for single-family homes to have sprinklers. However, when the village adopted that, that addendum, it also added an amendment to that addendum, which allows single-family homeowners, that is, single-family detached homeowners, to decline by, by signing an affidavit to decline having that in their home. So the village board at that time voted to adopt that code, however, to give the residents that option. There was nothing done to townhomes or duplexes or condominiums, which come under entirely separate part of the code, which are commercial, the condominiums are commercial. So since 2000, since the code was adopted in 2008, there has actually been a requirement for sprinklers, what we call suppression systems, in townhouses and duplexes. However, it was never done in Tuscany Woods or in Lakewood. So none of those homes have suppression systems. And it's not clear to me now whether it was, whether that was intentional at the time or that was just an oversight. But there are essentially, no homes have been built since the code was adopted that had suppression system. And further, every single-family detached home that has been purchased or built in Hampshire since then, the resident, the purchaser did decline by affidavit to have the sprinkler system in homes. There are a number of reasons why homeowners don't prefer to have them. I don't know that that's material here really tonight, but they can be, can be, first of all, they have to be inspected, they have a valve that doesn't allow the water to come back into the system because they come stale water. I had one in my home, I can tell you that, in Del Webb, that I hardly had them for just two years, they required them, and then they eliminated that requirement. And then once you have the backflow valve, it has to be inspected every year in order for it to be maintained, and that's a requirement by IEPA as well as the village ordinance here in Hampshire. So I think it's also material that we are in a competitive environment when it comes to construction and building, single-family homes, and you have in the agenda supplement a list of homes, surrounding homes in the village, around the village, that do not require sprinkler systems. Essentially, none of our surrounding communities do, and I would say for the same reasons that I just explained. So I think that's probably enough for me. Any further questions? I will say, I do want to mention that we've been working closely with the fire department and the building department on this. We had a meeting here in this room last Friday with Chief Harmon, and I think he would tell you, he will, would tell you, if you were here, that the department's official position is they would not support this, but they would also not oppose this. And so that's, that's, and I recommend, my recommendation as to that is that we do recommend that we pass this ordinance and allow this project to move forward. But this would also remove the affidavit requirement for single-family detached homes. We see that now as just extra paper that's required by the builder and by the homeowner, since not a single homeowner has chosen that system.
Since 2008.
Correct.
When was this subdivision annexed into the village, just as far as timing? It was prior to?
Which one? Prior to 2005.
This was 2005, so.
So. Lakewood?
No, 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 Prairie Ridge.
Oh, Prairie Ridge.
I was trying to get my timing together, trying to figure out, so we obviously passed the code since.
Yeah, and actually, this would not have even come up this time around, except for Impulson happened to catch it in the code during his review.
So, can you?
This would really be a building department issue.
Can I ask a question? So since this was annexed and planted and all that stuff in 2005, now that, and then we passed this in 2008, how are they responsible to follow our code at the current time if this was already set in motion? Like, we have development agreements and stuff, correct? So, and to, like, for stormwater retention and that kind of stuff, because that just came up. came up. When, when we were talking about Oakstead in particular, they weren't required to follow King County's adopted new stormwater retention because it was already previously agreed to that they didn't have to because of the year. So how does this?
I think simply put, it would be if it's not spelled out in the development agreement, then they're required to follow our code.
Okay, so that's the exception.
And this was not, this was not spelled out in the development agreement because it was not understood, it was not part of the code when they came in?
Is it that they follow the code at the time the development agreement is signed? Or are they required? Because how do you put it into a development agreement if you don't know that that's going to be code in a couple of years?
Well, you can put, you can put a lot of things in there that, if it's not mentioned, then it can't be grandfathered. And I would say that the county stormwater ordinance did provide for grandfathering, so that provided for it in itself. That helps explain that.
I guess.
And I think there's a provision, and Dan, I don't have it here in front of me tonight, but that changes to the building code would take effect after a lapse of time for builders like Crown, I'm sorry, they don't build, developers like Crown. There may have been a provision that said, six months after adoption of a change, it will take effect as to that development, something like that.
Josh, cheers.
Be the way you might address it. I don't have that agreement in front of me tonight, and there's been three amendments to it since.
Josh, I saw that you'd like to add more.
I just wanted to confirm that that is in the development agreement for Prey, Jokes, and Thames Farm, that after a new building code, specifically building codes are passed, the builders have six months to catch up to it, and then that code takes effect. So example, if tomorrow the village passed a new building code, in six months, that code would be required.
That's an entire code, not an amendment like this.
So I don't, the same rule as to an amendment or a code.
So I guess I'm trying to, and we can't find any history as to why it wasn't followed with Tuscany Woods or Lakewood or anything. It doesn't make any sense.
That's very concerning.
They may have had, again, I haven't looked recently at the agreements, maybe Josh has it. I remember that all of these builders were concerned, this has been an issue for a long time, and all of those builders were concerned about sprinklers. I'm pretty sure the Tuscany Woods agreement specifically provides that sprinklers would not be required for example.
I just don't understand, I just can't wrap my head around it because there's the rules, you know, for so many things that can't be touched because it was passed prior to an ordinance or some kind of regulation being passed, right? So that you would stick to your original development agreement, but this is one of these things that.
I guess because the building wasn't built yet, though.
Right, no.
I guess it's different if it was a standing structure that had been done prior to the ordinance passing.
So that means in 2007, had they been building strong, and then in 2008 and a half, we passed the ordinance in 2008, 2008 and a half, that means anything that they were still in the process of building would require it.
You can't go back and retroactively put it in.
No, right, I get that, but what I'm saying is, I don't know about fair or unfair or whatever, but if you've been a job and you know it's going to cost this much money to build houses, and then the bill to gas is something like that that's going to significantly cause an increase here.
But it's not.
But that's why the lag was put in, so that the builder could adjust and adjust pricing and planning, there would have been a different master plan submitted to the building department, for example.
And it would increase the price.
I just, I would suggest that that would just be bad policy if we did something like that to build.
I would agree with that. I just, I just can't wrap my head around it, considering there's been so many things that have come up over time, or we would go up, we can't do anything about it if you have a 20-year development agreement.
Well, I think this is a safety issue, and I think when we're talking building code, we're talking about people's lives and not just their homes and their possessions. We're talking about people dying. And I calculated the cost, because I did my independent research after you presented that, and what it would have cost for my home, which was built in 2006, would have been $4,000. That's less than.
The estimate right now is $6,000 per home.
No, not for my, I just did it, I just did the math. So based on mine, on my square footage.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't speaking of yours.
No, I'm talking about mine.
This project, the townhomes would be $6,000 each.
Right, but that's multiple families. So I'm talking about just my home.
Is that per unit?
Per unit.
Per unit with today's, with today's pricing of steel and that kind of stuff?
That's what they've estimated, yes.
Okay, well, even with that, $6,000 versus the cost of your deductible on your homeowner's insurance when you do have a higher, that's a lot of money that we're talking about. And we're also talking about when you do have a sprinkler system, you're reducing the damage to the home, and you're also not burning out your neighbors. And I really think that that's something we need to consider, that this is, this is important. Fire safety is a big deal.
What are the, maybe this is for EBI, but what are the precautions done in a townhome development in today's building code outside of sprinklers to make them fire safe and fires not traveling from one residence to the next?
Tim, can you speak to that?
Sorry, I mean, that would be a building code issue, maybe Dan's more familiar with that.
Yeah, I can speak to it, if you don't mind. Thank you. Excuse me. Well, there's a number of things. You know, first and foremost, this isn't an apartment house, apartment building where they have a common hallway, and the fires obviously spread down the hallways. Each unit has a firewall separating them from the unit on the other side of that wall. There is no common hallways, everything, you know, there's fire protection or fire blocking between all of the penetrations of that wall. And I think probably one of the biggest things is, you know, the difference between an existing home and a new home is of the requirement of interconnected alarm, fire alarm systems. You know, it isn't like old homes where you have a battery operated, maybe it's maintained, maybe it's not. These are interconnected, one goes, they're connected to the electrical system, one goes off, they all go off with the backup batteries. So that makes a big difference, and that's a big difference between the new homes and existing homes. But if I may, you know, one of the, the cost is actually not $6,000 per unit, and this is directly from the builders, their cost is $6,000. They, you know, they typically charge homeowners, the builders, I'm sorry, the buyers, you know, $7,000, $8,000, so because they need to make, you know, their profit on all upgrades. So that's a lot of money, and to be honest, to be quite candid, homeowners, home buyers don't want to pay for it. They would rather take that money and, you know, if they can't afford it, they'd rather take that money and spend it on other upgrades within their, within their home. And that's, and I think you've seen that, as Jade mentioned, you know, in the other subdivision, none of the homeowners paid for the fire protection system, they all signed the waivers, right? So there's that. The other issue is homeowners, and this does happen, these systems can fail, you know, without a fire event. We had an incident in one of our, it's actually a clubhouse facility in one of our subdivisions, and it's, we just opened it two months earlier, and one of the sprinkler heads froze, and it caused $20,000 worth of damage within, luckily, it was only within a bathroom, so it would have been a lot more expensive for that. But that happens, you know, and that's, that's a concern that homeowners, home buyers have, and that's, I think, one of the reasons they don't, don't wish to purchase it. The other side, the other thing is, right now, there's about a 20% difference between the cost of an existing home and the cost of a new home. You add $8,000 onto that, and now that gap gets bigger, and the gap's getting bigger already simply because of the cost of materials. And it really creates, you know, in particular, townhomes are a way to, you know, are primarily, the primary purchaser of townhomes are first-time buyers. If you keep spreading that gap out wider and wider, the fewer and fewer, you're going to get fewer and fewer of these new, these points of entry, the barriers to entry are going to, you know, not make, not provide for affordable housing, you know, for that type of buyer, so. And I think probably the biggest thing is, you know, that the board should consider, as Jade mentioned, none of the communities in the surrounding areas require this. And so if, you know, the homeowner, home buyer has an opportunity to buy either in Hampshire or these other communities are going to, you know, for the same product, they're certainly going to buy the home, which, the same home, you know, which doesn't require sprinklers, which is less expensive, so.
So I appreciate the financial side of it. I guess I heard as far as the facility itself, there's interconnected fire alarm that triggered for the whole building. Are there any structural things done, and I may have missed it, I apologize, other structural things done to the building to suppress fire from one unit to the next?
Set firewall.
Set a firewall.
Fire break.
Yeah.
Is there any besides that? Like, are these, are these going to have? It sounds like it's fire break and interconnected fire alarm, and is that, is that the two mitigations that we're talking about?
Typically, yeah, yeah. Similar to what, you know, why your garage has five-eighth inch drywall versus a half-inch drywall, which is typically through the rest of the house. It's creating a barrier so the fire can't spread quickly, gives the fire department time to get there and put the fire out.
Okay, and what's the, with the fire break in between a unit, what's the average time or the estimated time it would take for a fire to breach that from one unit to the next? How much time?
I, I'm not sure the building code exactly, but typically, I believe it's a two-hour. I can't speak that. Again, I, you know, we're built, we're not builders, we're land developers, but I think that's pretty standard.
I have just shared on the screen a copy of the plat, so you can see how the subdivision's laid out.
I do have one other question regarding the fire suppression. The attics, because these are townhomes that are all connected, is there anything, you know, because I know each, each has their own attic and that's separate from the other, is that same firewall in between, does that go all the way up to the very top of the roof then, so that would protect completely? I'm thinking about like a chimney fire or something that, you know, insulation that catches fire in an attic, and I just wanted to see is, if that travels or if that firewall stays all the way up to the very tip of the roof.
I believe it does, but I can't say that for sure. I'm not sure what, first of all, I'm not sure what the code requires regarding that, and again, we're not the builder of the buildings here, but I believe that is the case.
If my, I lived in a duplex prior to my single-family home, and my house was built in 93 at the time, and I had a firewall that went all the way up between the homes, in the attic and everything. So I don't know if that's dictated, if that's what the code dictated, but I know that there are homes in the building that they go all the way up to the roof, so I imagine it's in our code. I don't know.
How does the roof come into play then? If you get, if your roof's on fire, there's no fire.
No, but if there, no, but if there's a fire in your attic.
I get that, but once your roof catches on fire, and then it's going to spread to the whole unit, right?
Yeah, but theoretically, like, if there's a fire that breaks out in your unit, the fire department has two hours to get it out, right? And that's why, like, in some of those presentations that we sent in with the fire department, that's why they have the ladder truck. That's everybody asked why they have the ladder truck, and it's for, it's for those multi-unit fire. I'm not a fireman, right? I'm not, I just know that that's, some of the things that I've heard is the fact that we have that big ladder truck so that they can put it over the top and shoot the water down, am I wrong?
No, you're not wrong.
Okay. So I, I don't know what to do with this, I don't, but I'm conflicted on it as well.
Does the, does the international building code or international residential code still have a requirement for sprinklers in the current code? Is the 2006 still the current code?
No, it's not the current code, it's a similar code, Josh, you can look into that.
So the most recent building, international building code does require sprinklers?
That would be the 2021 code, and yes, it does, unless you exempt it.
Right, okay. Do we know why, I'm assuming I know why these other communities don't require this? Is it just the cost?
I think there's two reasons, the homeowners don't want them, and the extra cost.
Okay.
And frankly, if we were to, if we do not exempt this, this development will not happen, and we probably won't build another townhouse or duplex in this town for a lot of years.
I certainly don't disagree with that statement. I don't, I don't think that that really plays into my, my being conflicted about it. I just, I think that I'm conflicted about it because there's the, the safety, right? So you don't, but at the same time, just because we're exempting it, doesn't mean that people can't ask for it. So like, if somebody was building a home, like in particular, if I was building a home, I could have the option of putting in a sprinkler system, the village wouldn't stop you from having one, it's just a matter of whether or not that you would want to pay for it. It's just, I know that I, me personally, I probably would, like you say, right, if it costs $8,000, or no, it was Dan, if it was a cost of $8,000, and I was a new, you know, typically, young couples are the ones that are buying the duplexes, getting their start. I know, like, when I ten, you know, I don't know how many years ago, I wasn't looking to spend that much money on a sprinkler system, I'd want the nicer cabinets. It's, I'm sorry, it's just.
It's true.
It's a question of whether you want to give the homeowner their option to do that, or whether you want to mandate that they have a worse suppression system.
But respectively, we already have a waiver in place for single-family, may I finish my sentence, please, excuse me. We already have it in place for single-family. Why can we not just put it in? I understand that usually the townhomes are built and then sold, but why can't we have some that have them and others that don't? You don't want to buy one, you know, $8,000 more, you have this one. I mean, I honestly, it's a higher risk, and just because other people don't do it is not a good enough reason for me. There's a lot of people who don't do things that are safety mitigation things, that doesn't make a good reason to avoid doing them.
So you bring up an interesting point. I mean, is that something that we could institute a waiver where they would sign off, or because it's a built, a multi-unit building, that doesn't make sense, right? You can't, you can't have somebody opt out in the middle and people want it on the end or vice versa, right?
Actually, the problem would be that they build, they will start building, they'll build 139 units at one time. They won't build them as they, as they sell them, so they'll be building them before people buy them. So that won't be a possibility.
Yeah, because of, because of the multi-unit building.
Is there any way that they can be notified that legally, you know, in our village, we have required them, but your builder has opted out, so you need to sign this, it says you understand you're buying something that doesn't have a sprinkler system?
I, well, I mean.
Especially if they don't want it, I mean, if a lot of buyers don't want it, just, you know, thank you for signing.
They know they're buying something without a sprinkler system.
But how many people know it's an option?
I think that that's something that, like, when you sit down, when you're, I have built a house, I've not been unlucky to be able to build a house, but, I mean, that's part of the deal, right? Like, it's the builder's responsibility to go over the code with you, and then it's, right, the builder.
I don't want to suggest, I don't want to suggest that the builder is required to tell them that they can buy a sprinkler system. I don't know that that's the case, in fact, I doubt that it is the case. I have purchased new homes, and I don't recall anybody ever telling me that that's an option I could choose. I can tell them I want that, I can have it installed. But that wouldn't be the case in this case either, because they could be built before the purchase.
And we've had two subdivisions, a ton of them go up, and it hasn't been installed when it's supposed to be installed.
And we still.
That's a whole other issue.
Well, yeah, it is, but I will look into that, and we'll probably find that that was in the development agreements for those two projects. I didn't see it when I looked at them myself, but it could be buried there, several hundred pages and several versions of them.
We all know that.
One thing that was in my mind when I considered this is, the board has many times told us to get rid of the variances in the ordinance, so that people don't have to come in and go before the board for things that we automatically approve. And that seems to me that this principle applies here, that every new home that's been built in town since, since this ordinance, since this code was in place, the homeowner has had to fill out a form and waive that, waive their right for this, to have this. So to me, that just eliminates the paperwork and eliminates extra work when a homeowner has to go along on the same line.
So I think there's a slight difference between us requiring a homeowner to pay for a zoning board, zoning and board hearing for a variance of whatever it is, $400, for things that we say are just a code issue, that I think we had that discussion. I had never knew that, that we had until tonight, that we just had a piece of paper that all new builder, homeowners would sign saying, I don't want a sprinkler, that's never, as far as I know, has never come to the fore.
I don't.
They don't pay for variance.
But it's been since 2008, it's been practiced since 2008, so I would have something that.
I totally get it, but I'm just saying, that's not really like, that's not an apples to apples.
Right.
Well, I think the example he's trying to make is, and I don't speak for Mr. Hedges, but an example is that the waiver has to be signed, we have to file it, there's a lot of staff work that has to go into it for every new home. So in that, in that regard, I think that's the comparison. So right now, we have something on the books that creates paperwork that, that no one since the year 2008, and we've had homes built since 2008, has ever taken part. And so by that, it's kind, by that comparison is, you know, we have people coming in front of us, says we want variance, signage, or variance, that, you know, I want to ride pedal Says we want variance, uh, signage or variance on that, you know, I want to ride pedal bikes on this, on the sidewalk, that kind of thing, right? We, we have stuff that hasn't been enforced, number one, right? And then number two, in the option of the people in the residences community. For, it's not just a five-year span or a two-year span. It's been since the year two thousand and eight. Nobody is put in a sprinkler system. They always wait.
In a single family dwelling.
Correct.
That's fourteen years that not a single person that bought a house said that they wanted the sprinkler system in there. Personally, I think if people want it and we don't have it there, they're going to go to a different subdivision. But obviously you're looking at one hundred percent of the people that came in fourteen years didn't want it. So, I mean, to have, as you said, you don't want to say paperwork and yes, people's lives, but you have the option of, of purchasing a home. And if it doesn't have that something major to you, you're going to go to a different development. But I, I see having to have everybody do that waiver and to sign it and to go back and forth. I, I, I don't see that as a good use of anyone's time. It's not like even two people said that they wanted it before, you know, not even a single person. So I, I, I look at all these, these communities that don't have it. And I know Mr. Hedges said that, that his townhouse has one in, um, in Huntley, but Huntley's not on this list. So I think you had said that they withdrew it and they don't do it anymore. But not only then does comes with this, the cost of the actual, you know, six, eight thousand dollars to put it in. Is, you know, Mr. Hedges said it's got to be, you know, checked every single year. And I'm sure you're having to pay for that as a yearly expense as well. So I, I mean, I don't want to push people out of our area. I'd like them to have the option to come here. So I will, I will be voting for this ordinance change.
So I did, I did look up and in the National Association of Builders, they have a document for two thousand and nineteen that's fire sprinkler mandates. There's only two states with fully approved mandates, California and Maryland. There's two states with partial mandates, Massachusetts and New York, Illinois, fire sprinkler mandates defeated, but a local jurisdiction could add it in if they want, like we have. And then twenty-six states can be defeated if no mandates. So twenty states have it where a local jurisdiction can do it, but the state defeated it, meaning no sprinkler mandate. Twenty-six states have just no mandates.
Not that that deal changes the safety outlook, but.
Interesting. May I ask how many homes we think or estimate were built between two thousand and eight and twenty fifteen? Because that was a huge downturn in the market.
Um, I would say we averaged, uh, we have averaged about fifty homes per year since twenty twelve.
But I'm asking two thousand and eight to twenty.
Oh, but when I first came here in two thousand and eleven, we didn't build a single home, I don't think for two, probably two and a half years. Um, and then we built one home and then, um, in the, in the biggest year, I believe we built probably close to a hundred and twenty. And that would be including townhomes that, you know, they go up pretty fast.
And that was within the last, let's say.
Year two thousand and fourteen, fifteen type, right?
I believe the city of Chicago too, they exempt the oldest buildings and the high rises. And those are the ones that would probably need that system more than any other. And they're all exempted in the city of Chicago. So I think that's something important to think about too, because yes, it would be after the fact and trying to put them in old buildings, but that's why they exempted them. You move into that apartment, you know, then I would assume they'd have to have something to, to know the fact that there is no sprinkler system in there.
I know, I know that they, uh, their furniture and that burns really quickly. That's a fact nowadays curtains and that kind of stuff. They're all full chemicals and all that kind of stuff and they burn way faster. I've also seen, I've also seen in this town, uh, there's a, across the, from little people playtime, there's that subdivision that has the duplexes or condos, if you will. They all have sprinklers and, um, I was a few years ago, a friend of mine lives over there and his furnace failed while he was out town. And his sprinkler system froze because the heat was off his house. Cost thousands and thousands of dollars to fix because the house flooded because the sprinklers were going and. So, and I, and, and in a winter time, that parking lot all ice stuff and stuff. I don't know. You guys probably remember because we had to go out and stall.
There, yeah, there was one instance for sure. I'm not sure if this is the same one, but those sprinkler lines go over the garage. And, um, they, there's some heat in the garage. And they, and that's, so it caused a lot of damage.
Yeah, wow. No, I, I, I get, I get the bad design stuff, but I'm just saying that I see, I see both sides of it, which is what makes it.
Yeah. Well, I find it interesting that our fire department would not support this.
No, they didn't, they didn't say that they.
They said they wouldn't oppose.
They wouldn't either way.
They're not taking a stand. They're not taking a stand either way.
And isn't that interesting? Because their whole ethos is to put out fires and to make things safer. So if they are going to support it, I understand they're not opposing it. But sitting in the middle says something.
That's what I'm saying, a conflict of interest though, because they're the ones that are addressing all the issues here. And I can see how they could take a stand when they wouldn't go one way or the other. Because they, it's something they're doing. So they don't want to take a side on it. And I, I understand.
I can explain that to you. I, I sat at this table, as I said, for, for three hours last week with, uh, not just this issue, but my several issues with, uh, Trevor. And he understands the practicality of it. He realizes that, uh, we've had homes in, in both Tuscany and Lakewood and we haven't had that problem. Um, he, of course, is concerned about life, not just residents, but of course firefighters as well. But he also understands the practicality of development. And he, he sees that this community is growing and the fire department wants the community to grow. Um, so Trevor sat at this table, spoke freely about it. In fact, he had two other people with him, Inspector. Um, and, uh, so I, I think he had a fair, fair statement and a fair opportunity to speak his piece. And, uh, I didn't feel that he was at all, um, inappropriate. I think he, he realized that, uh, certainly didn't want to go on record supporting this. For obvious reasons, but they don't oppose it. So they're neutral on this, which I believe is perfect.
And, and for that matter, I mean, they're, they don't have any jurisdiction over this, right? And so, and, and we can all have opinions about different things, but it's kind of, it's, we've all tried to like toe the line, right? Like even with the stuff that went on at the schools and all that, we kind of stayed like, us as the village tried to stay out of it. Because, and we all had our own opinions, right? But we didn't issue, like, we didn't get involved in it. Or just, I think that the fire department is trying to respect everybody's boundaries, if you will. You know what I mean? Because it's, it's, it's not respectfully, it's not their decision to make, it's ours. And so, wow, I mean, again, they're, they've been an active player in the conversation. But I, I appreciate our relationship with the fire department and I appreciate the fact that they've been so involved and been so supportive of, of us. But I also respect how they're handling this because again, it's not their decision. And so it's, it's ours. That's what, that's what we're here to do.
And as a matter of process, we, we always reach out to Trevor and we did in this case also. We reached out to him and asked him to come in and make this.
So I don't think it was anything that like, uh, I'm not insinuating that you're saying it was like nefarious. I, I don't, I don't, I think that that's, me personally, I think it's the right move for them, just like it would be for us if there was something going on over, over there. People ask our opinion and that kind of stuff. We, we can give our input to the people that need it and then we stay out of it. So. I don't know. It's a tough, I, I think, I think that that's what makes this decision or this conversation so difficult with all of us. Because we all understand the implications of whatever decision that we make, right? Like we all want the community to grow. We all want, but this is one of these situations I really feel like no matter what we do, or no matter what we, however this goes, I think either, I think we're all conflicted about it. I don't, I don't think that any one of us has got a preconceived notion or preset, I mean, we're all, and this is one of those times where that's why there are seven of us, or eight of us, or the whole village. Like we're all working together and we all have different opinions and we're all going to use our thought processes to make the best decision that we can with the information that we have. And that's what makes this tough because it's not a very, it's not clear cut.
So if this were to stand, if we were to keep the current ordinance as it is, requiring sprinklers, would the builder still be able to come in and request a variance and go through the building and zoning to make the case of why they wouldn't want sprinklers and have that considered by the board?
I honestly, I, I suppose there's a mechanism for that, for a single development, but I would really discourage that. To single out a single development and say, we're just going to exempt them from the code and not somebody else?
No, I'm not saying that we wouldn't say it for other people too, but we have a process that we just had a gentleman go through for a garage because it didn't meet the current code and zoning requirements. So he paid, came in, said, here's what it's going to look like. Here's what I want to do with the materials on the app and why I think it's a good idea.
The variance process is different under the building code. It, it's not a zoning question. It would never, would not go to Mr. Marax's commission.
Okay.
It wouldn't be a variance. It would be an exemption from the ordinance is what it would be. A single exemption rather than a broad exemption. Correct. It's a building code issue.
I'm sorry, trustee Paul Street?
I was going to say, keep in mind, I mean, they, these are all going to be built without owners. I mean, there's going to be no buyer there. These are just going to all be built. There's no time for a waiver and everything. They're going to already be up.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean the waiver like similar to the, the single family detached. I meant that as a builder for the collective of all the units, that is there a process that they could ask for exemption from it? Because we don't have the ability to have homeowner authorization beforehand.
Like similar to a process in which zoning variance can be granted. I think that that was the question he was asking.
So for the whole neighborhood M, there would be an exemption.
Right, correct. But there would be a process, the builder would, would present like, here's what we're doing, here's why we don't feel this is needed. Here's the, the design or what we're doing that would, um, uh, specific to that development of what's, you know, we're, we're thinking is going to help mitigate fire damage and just some type of process. If that doesn't exist, that's okay. That's my question is, does that make more?
Could exist. You could simply make a motion tonight to exempt this particular development from that code. I would not recommend that. It would be singling out a single development over other developments.
Well, it'd be hard on you for the development because they're, the builder isn't here and we don't have plans and we don't know what they're doing.
You would have to do it now because the builder won't buy, this particular builder will not buy this project if, if these are required. So that's a, that's a matter of fact in this case. If you exempt one townhome development, you'd be hard pressed not to exempt the next one. I mean, let's be honest.
You know, I mean, that, that's pretty much.
No, I understand that.
So it's really the same as taking out your code. For townhomes. And, and the proposal is taken out altogether.
Well.
May I ask which side of the tracks this development is on? The railroad tracks?
On the north side.
Where we don't have a fire station? And we're getting an increased number of freight trains?
There is one right at Lakewood. I know it's a little further and stuff, but it is on the north side of the tracks. And it's just at the end of the Lakewood.
Right.
But, and there will be the one built near the high school that's on the north side of the track.
And right now we have our fire department has to go from where it is now in the downtown area all the way up north. So, uh, you know, it already travels a big distance.
And even, even with station number two, let's say that there is a train and these guys are waiting, they still need to come from, at high school. I think that this is like, I don't know that there's a good solution unless there's a fire department across the street for them, but I don't think that that's going to happen either.
No, probably not.
You know, I, I, it just, I don't know. We talked about this. I.
There are enough passive fire suppression.
Mitigations.
Thank you. In our current building code, that letting go of this is still going to buy people enough time.
Well, I think the big thing is, you know, from my perspective, the wired smoke alarms. I mean, that's huge. I mean, because the, I mean, if it goes off, it might, they're all wired together in my understanding so that if something goes off in one unit, the other alarm sound. Is that accurate?
So like if it goes off in your unit, it goes off in my unit at the other end of the.
The building so you guys can all get out. Am I, am I correct?
I would not assume that.
Okay.
So it would just go off in his unit and I, I being four doors down would have no idea.
Well, you'd find out when the fire truck.
Yes.
I mean. Right?
Right. I, yeah. I, I'm trying to find a way to support this because I don't want to stall development. But I also don't want to do that at the cost of a life or even significant problem. I have a really hard time balancing those two things. And that's what I'm trying to find, like what else do we have?
And I. Well, and I understand that, but I, I, I I also have, me personally, this is me, this is my view, my greed's view, not, not the village of Hampshire view. Okay. I want to make this clear. Okay. But I have a hard time, I have a hard time with us as a board of seven people dictating this kind of expense if on people, if that's not something they want to do. And so for that matter, if they, if somebody feels strongly about buying a home with fire sprinklers, just like if somebody were to feel strongly about somebody, you know, buying a house with hardwood floors and all that kind of stuff. Because when you're, when you're, to me, when I was buying a house, sprinklers were never even part of the conversation. They were just not something I was interested in. And, but if it was something that I wanted, I would go buy a house that had one.
You would go seek that out.
I would go seek that out. And so my, my, I guess my, my rationale behind it is, okay, I, I don't really think that it's, again, our job to say that you have to have them. I would have a problem. I would have a significant issue if we passed something that said, we're not allowing them, period. Does that make sense? So like, not now, this board, I don't believe it's our job, again, with me, this is my opinion. I don't believe it's our job to say, this is something that has to happen in our community and we have to put this in everybody's house. Because at the end of the day, we aren't the ones that are paying for it. The, the people buying the homes are. And if they feel strongly about that, then they need to buy a house that has. It's no different than if you wanted grand countertops and that whole stuff. I mean, I, I mean, you think about it. I mean, there's a lot of older homes in this community. Like I, me personally, I didn't want one with swimming pool because I didn't want to have to deal with my son running and getting up into the swimming pool and that kind of stuff. That's just not something I want to deal with because I, to me, I felt that that was unsafe. However, there's a lot of swimming pools out here.
But we require a fire exit in a basement, for example. Airbags are now required in cars. All new cars. And those were a huge expense when they were first. And I guess, again, I'm trying to balance.
I know.
Safety. It, it, this is not a wishlist kind of thing. This is a safety thing.
But we don't require it for single family homes though. That's my other side of it, but we're not.
Do, but we ask them to sign a waiver if they don't want them.
Right. We give them that mechanism not to. And so with the with, with the duplex conversation, with those people just starting out typically, or not, or downsizing and that kind of stuff, right? Like fixed income and that kind of stuff. So, I mean, a ten thousand, like let's just call it what it is, a ten thousand dollar option. Right? Or, or for lack of better terminology, like a ten thousand dollar option, what are they going to want to do with it? If you're building your home, you want to take ten thousand dollars and put it into sprinkler, that's your deal. If you don't, I mean, I, I would, I would be vehemently opposed to an ordinance that comes across this, this room, this board that says that we're going to say, you cannot have sprinklers in your home. I would be a hundred percent against it. Part that I'm torn about is a part where you, we're saying that you have to have live in that subdivision, you have to have this. But if you make enough money to afford a single family, you can get, you can waive that, you can sign a waiver. But if you don't make enough money and you still want to live here, you, and that's, and that's the problem that I have with it.
Right. I see that point.
It, just to take it one step further and, and.
Sorry, there's a huge delay being remote. Trustee Paul Street, go ahead and then. There's a huge delay. Go ahead.
I apologize for that. I can't tell that from here. Um, but no, no disparaging to trustee Mott. But if we required that moving forward, all of the homes in the subdivision had to be solar. You know, that could be a considerable expense for some people, although I don't want to get into the, it doesn't cost me anything. But I mean, if a builder's putting them in and it's going to cost a lot more. it doesn't cost me anything. But I mean, if a builder's putting them in and it's going to cost a lot more and, and you have to have it, that's a, that could be a considerable expense. There are other opt, you know, examples and stuff. I just picked solar. So again, not against trustee Mott here, but that's a lot of money. If, if I'm told that I have to have it there and it's going to cost me more, I'm going to go someplace else, you know? So we want to bring people into this community. I, I think our, our residents here are smart and they can make the decisions that they want. If somebody wants to add additional fire protection to their homes, you know, they could have fire extinguishers in every single room. We could require those. And, and I just think we're, we're doing too much and, and taking away personal responsibility. People want that, they're going to go someplace to get it. If, if they don't, and, and especially we said, these are starter type homes. And we're going to be taking out a whole big group of people that are going to not come to the community because they can't afford the additional expense and they don't want it, or they don't want the risk of it going off and ruining everything into their house. So, you know, I, I think it's, it's, it's an, they, they just have to understand that it's not here. I mean, and I look at all these other communities and, and, you know, just using Pingree Grove here. I mean, right at the corner of, you know, of, of 72 and 20 and, you know, over there, they've got all those different, there's three story, you know, row homes. And Pingree Grove is listed here. It's not required. So you have all of those home and it's, that's very dense. I mean, they're so close to each other, they're going to set each other on fire and it's not required there. And those are going up now. I, I just think people should be able to have the choice to decide what they want. And if it's not here, because they don't, you know, they don't want to be required to have that. I don't want to lose people over that either. I understand the safety, but if, if that's important to you, you're going to go someplace where you can get it done or a personal, single family home. So, sorry.
Trustee Mott was trying to talk at the same time recognizing the huge delay in, in electronic. That's why I apologize. I didn't mean.
That's okay.
I apologize too.
I agree with trustee Paul Street that, that this is a double edged sword because you have human life involved here. You have, there's a lot of factors when you build. I built four homes. So I think I have some experience in what costs are involved and what I looked at and what I didn't look at. Built my house out here in Hampshire in 2002. If they hadn't told me, I would have had to put a sprinkler system in, I probably would have gone somewhere else. Because it's, you eventually get to a point where you push people where they go, I just can't afford to be here. So that's one side of it. The, the human factor and safety and everything is, is huge. In, in regards to this looking over what is being presented and how all of these other places have taken that view that it's something they don't want to do. They signed off to say they didn't want to do it. I, to me, that sounds a very reasonable thing to do. And I think we're going to, I, I'm in a position where I'm in a house now. I moved once already, four years ago, from a two story to a ranch. And now I'm going to be looking at moving in because it's just size. We don't need the, the size. And I'm looking in Hampshire and you start telling me that I, you know, I'm going to have to put thousands of dollars into sprinkler systems and that, I'm probably going to have to look, go somewhere else. But that's, that's the point. If, if it's, if it's with or without sprinklers, that's what people are going to decide. Can I afford to do it? Is it in my best interest? Is it really necessary? There's a lot of factors to look at when you, when you're building a home and you're going somewhere. Me personally, if, if you push me into a situation now where I, you're adding thousands of dollars to the residence, then maybe I'm going to go somewhere else. Not saying that I will, I'm just saying these are factors that you have to look at. And for young people starting out, this is a big thing for them. So that's just my view. And it's, on my point here, I personally would be in favor of removing this from the code. This is just me. And I'll say anything there that you agree with or you disagree with. This is just my opinion. This, oh, back.
Yeah. I'm wanting to trust that whoever did our occupancy permits for the other developments that don't have sprinklers will follow in code. And there's something in the, those are long documents. I'm just going to trust that they did their job correctly and didn't work them. Missed a glaring thing like that. That being said, it means those were put into the development agreements. We just did another development agreement with Oakstead that also has town home or multi-family residence projected in there. Was an exemption for this included in that development? So that it re, what I'm trying to understand is, is this one development, this one builder, this one area of this development, the only one that's affected by this code right now, have the other development agreements included something that would waive this requirement, hence why they don't have it?
That's my knowledge. And I believe that this discussion earlier, that they would have six months to comply with the new code provision anyway would apply.
You know, well, I, I think the question that you're asking is, was it raised as a concern during the development agreement process that this code existed?
Well, I mean, Oakstead just got approved.
Right.
Was this code waived? Or like, was this part of the development agreement? They wouldn't have to do a sprinkler system in those townhomes?
No, I can, I can tell you that until two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, we were not even aware that it was in our code. I'll be perfectly honest with you. We haven't had a townhouse come up since I've been here. It went through plan review and that's when, uh, design review and that's when Tim Paulson from EIA caught it in the code. That's the first time it's ever been raised, to my knowledge, in probably 15 years.
But we haven't built anything, a townhome since, right? So it's not like something that we, there's a lot of stuff that comes up that as we go through the process, we find.
But I would tell you that it came, it came as a surprise to the builders and developers.
Oh, those were already built. I don't remember. That, that whole thing in the back that was built and then, and then the guy walked away from them and they were all sealed up forever, remember? And then somebody.
But all those duplexes up in the front, I mean, there's a couple of townhomes that we built in the front.
That hasn't been since Jay's been here or any of us have been here.
No, but it depends on the ordinance.
No, I agree. I, I agree with that. I'm just saying that it hasn't been since anybody in this room has been here that those town, that townhomes have been built. With the exception of our, our attorney.
You discovered some things just recently that this is, this is a building part issue. It's not an engineering issue. Right now, I know the engineers get catching in this case. But I, we, we stumbled on, it was not enforcing effectively for us in the last couple.
Is there any recourse to go back and find that? So let, you said you were going to do the research and in Tuscany Woods. Do we have any recourse? Let's say that it's not in the development agreement. Is there any recourse to go after being an effort not forcing our code?
I refer to, that this idea of an affidavit originated in the Tuscany Woods 2004 development agreement. So at that time, there was a discussion about sprinklers, at least in single family residences. Village Board said, please inform each buyer that they have an option for sprinklers and have them sign off with this affidavit process that they declined to install a sprinkler in their home.
That's for single family.
That's in the 2004 Tuscany Woods development agreement. So when this new code was enacted or adopted in 2008, that idea of the affidavit was carried forward for all single family residences. That's what I'm seeing.
So how do?
That doesn't address townhomes, by the way. And I, I haven't, I haven't had a chance while I'm sitting here tonight to pick up on that angle.
So for the single family detached that they can sign a waiver for, does that waiver then have to get sent to the village for verification that they waived it?
Well, that would be my understanding, but I'm not, we, we, that's a building. We get them. Yes, we get them.
Yeah. Okay. So for all of the development that's gone out in the new development, we have assigned waivers saying they declined the sprinkler systems?
Yes.
And for like spec homes, quote unquote spec homes, the builder signs off that they just didn't do it. And then the buyer doesn't have anything to do with it, right? Because they built a home before it was sold?
We've really seen this back home too. We will probably in the future.
Right. But I'm just saying, so like a model home gets built. And so, so that's the, the person that, that the first buyer of the home doesn't have a choice anyway.
Right.
Because it's already been built and they built it and it's, so even if they wanted it, they couldn't get it anyway. So again, if it's important, then they'll go buy a house here in the middle of the road. I'm just trying to understand the psychology. So do you?
I think we all are.
How, um, how do you guys, how do you guys feel? Do you guys want to vote on this tonight? Because we have a lot of.
Yes.
Okay. So there's one yes.
Yeah.
Okay, there's two.
Yeah.
There's three. I'm voting on it. Okay. That, that's, I guess what, that's what I'm asking. Do you feel that we've discussed this enough to, to get to a vote? Or do you guys want to talk about it some more or what? I don't want to be, I don't want to be, it's a pretty sensitive subject, right?
It's been an hour.
I get that. I get that. But that's what we're here to do. Okay.
Then we're, I would just like to add one last comment.
Sure.
And that, all a minor factor in your consideration and that is that we have hired a lot of professionals to work for the community as well as myself. And this is the consensus recommendation from staff who need to support this. I'm going to ask you to consider it.
Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to, uh, to approve an ordinance number 22 dash three, amending the Village Building Code Regulation, removing the requirement for automated fire sprinkler system in residential buildings. Now, I guess the, this residential buildings, that's only duplexes, correct? Or is that for single families as well?
For all, for all the multiple.
Okay.
Because our apartment is considered not commercial.
No, yeah, right. Exactly. Just prove our, our uncertainty, right? Okay.
So moved.
And the first. And the second. Any other questions, comments, or concerns to speak about? Or should we just get to the vote? Okay, let's just get to the vote. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mott.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Street?
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Ms. Voder? Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Hey. Thank you, Mr. Mott. I just want to say thank you guys for the discussion. You know, that we don't always agree.
And I just want to be clear, because I wasn't going to do it when I voted. The only reason I voted aye on this is because of the requirement of the fire brick in between units and the hardwired sprinklers or hardwired fire alarm system. If those are not included in the building code, then I would have never voted. So I think when we're looking at signing off to make sure it's in our code, that is required.
Agreed.
It's just my own sentiment. I just want that to be.
I also think it's going to be really important to get that fire station number two. I'll get a, you'll have a chance to vote on that, Jim. I guess I, that's what I hear.
And I know it has a little barrier right now, so, but I just want to let you guys know when you're talking about the firewalls, the firewalls are not necessarily brick or block in between. So they have options with that two hour rate. It can be a two hour rated wall where it's a certain thickness of drywall on each side, whether it be five eights or whatnot, that goes all the way up to the roof line. So it's not, don't, don't have that misconception that it's a brick block that's going from base to here. That, that's.
Firewall.
That's firewall's difference.
We were told that it was a two hour rated firewall. And so there's different ways that you can construct it to still get to that two hour.
Block is one of them. Block is definitely one of them, but that's not.
I may have misheard that.
That, that's not why, so I just.
That the word block or brick was used, but I may have misheard.
But I think that, I mean, there's multiple, like, like Mr. McBride has said, there's multiple ways to get to that two hour rating. I think that that's what's important is not, not necessarily the material is, right?
Okay. With that, um, the mayor would ask for a motion to award the streetscape project to the lowest bidder of L.A.'s contractors in the amount of $1,024,449.99. The, the engineer's estimate for this project was $889,068.5. With engineering, the costs are roughly, well, this, this would, let me start over on my comments. You will all remember the last summer, we, we did this project and we have a million, $30,000 to spend from the streetscape grant, the CTVG grant. We did it last summer. It came in at 1.5 million. So we spoke here at this board meeting several times since then. But most recently, when you approved the project, you go up with it again, approved with the specs. So what we've done with the new, with the new specs is we've scaled back on some of the decorative pieces. I recall mentioning this just recently that, uh, the board, probably for the streetscape project, were in this order, safety, infrastructure, aesthetics. And so in this case, I, I remember telling you at the last meeting that one of the things that we changed in this particular one is we had decorative ballards that the description was, they give the appearance of safety. But in fact, they were aluminum ballards with lights. So now we've taken those out and we've saved money putting steel ballards in that are truly safeties. Ballards that are at the intersection, at the bulge holes at the corners of the intersection. So I believe in this case, what we have is the same, we, I believe we have the same infrastructure that we had before. We have the same safety by eliminating angle parking on the west side of the street. So the street is wider and there's more room for cars and better visibility. And, uh, and then the, so where we have given up is on the aesthetics. We've changed from, in some cases, from pavers to act to the appearance of pavers, the painted pavers. Uh, we've really looked at the materials with Kurt, for me, like Kurt Detman, who's been handling this project the second time around. So we looked at some really good quality paint that will, that will work and stick. Uh, so it won't wear off as opposed to actual pavers. So I think we'll get, and by the way, one of the things that we had to give up in this is the, the overhead molding. Canopy lighting came in as an alternate bid at $250,000 additional. And those lights, by the way, last summer, when we did this last summer, those lights were only $150,000. So this time around, the two lowest bids for the lights were $250,000. The next highest bid was $300,000. So we're definitely seeing that material costs are extremely high. But what I do want to mention is that because this amount is to a million 24, that means this with other village funds. And while it's a little early for a decision of the finance or the budget committee next week, Lions and I have come up with a solution where we have funds available to supplement the additional amount. So with that in mind, we would ask that you approve this grant or approve this award to the vote bidder.
So this should, this discussion shouldn't be as sad, I suppose. So what, uh, you guys have any questions or comments about the streetscape? I mean, I know that we had, this is one of those times that I guess it's like champagne taste on a beer budget. I guess as the saying goes, due to the, due to the market, you know? And I, I'm really disappointed about the lights. I, I'm, I'm really disappointed about the light. I think that would look nice. But at the end of the day, we have a time to think that we have to get the money spent by. And with the conditions of the market, I don't necessarily know that we can afford to wait any longer. I think this is one of these decisions that we have to make. And then maybe we can procure another grant and another point for the lighting or find some alternative income sources, whether it be, you know, initiative grants or our representatives or something to try to get us to enhance what's already here. But I think that if we wait too long, we're going to be in one of these decisions where we have to give the money back.
And I lose this money.
And I want to give the money back.
Right. May I ask a couple of questions about the lighting?
Sure.
First of all, will the loss of that, um, the cafeteria, sorry, how do I say that? Yeah, that lighting, will that affect the safety of the? Will it affect the safety in any way of losing any luminescence?
We're actually replacing all the streetlights and we're adding two streetlights in the festival block, regular streetlights.
Okay.
So there are a total of 10 streetlights in this project now. So that, that will be included.
Okay. And the second question then is, is this still going to be, like sometimes when they build schools, for example, they'll build a one story with the intent that it is engineered in story. Not that I think we're building any stories of anything, but i- is this project? engineered so that if we decided to do that later, we could easily add that?
If we did what, the lights? Um, I would say not easily. Uh, we're going to be putting all new conduit in the ground for all the cabling and everything, so there will be new conduit. We can run new conduit. Uh, one consideration was to actually put the paces in and do the pre-wiring, but that, we're already over budget by a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, so it just didn't fit in the budget.
Okay.
Now there, we have actually considered some creative solutions that would be add-ons. Uh, we have a company right here in town that manufactures lights. And uh, so we're going to talk to them, Laura has to give a context with them. We're going to talk to them about maybe some other creative ways that we can do it for less money.
Okay.
And we may come back to you with that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The colored concrete sidewalk, is that kind of like pavement, even though it's concrete?
No, it's just going to be colored. There won't be any stamped papers in there. That will also be on our budget.
We had stamped, I don't know if we still do, but it was stamped at one time.
Yeah, it's pretty well worn off.
It's pretty worn off anyhow. Like between the Rose Garden and the First American Bank, that was, that was stamped at one time.
It still is.
It is, it's, yeah, that's why I said, I don't know if it still is, because it's pretty, it's pretty worn down.
They painted every year.
Yeah.
And frankly, Dave is pleased that we're not going to put papers for the crosswalks because the plows tend to tear them up and it goes up the plows too. So this, this will actually be better for maintenance purposes.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask one more thing. So, so this project then is, it's going to cost us, with all the changes we've already made, even just to make it less, we're still going to be in the hole a hundred and sixty thousand that we're going to have to come up with. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
I mean, I, I'm a little hesitant to accept a bid then that, you know, with money that we don't have. I mean, that's a, that's a big chunk of change.
Let, let me share something with you all, because uh, I think this is important. I have to be careful how I use my words, because uh, Finance Director Lyons is sitting next to me. There's some really good news that happened the same week, but we're not ready to bring it before you until two weeks from now. Um, the water connection bids came in four hundred thousand dollars under budget. Um, so we call it, um, uh, we had planned to, we had eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars worth of number initiatives, grants for that project, and we were planning on spending about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our ARPA funds for the, uh, all of our ARPA funds for that project. We won't have to do that now. There are, we can use ARPA funds for lost revenue to replace lost revenue. And so trustee Polistreni, I think the concern that you have, I don't want to read your mind, but I would share with you that we now have roughly four hundred thousand dollars of unencumbered uh, unobligated ARPA funds that we can use in the budget.
So also going towards infrastructure, because that was infrastructure, this is infrastructure.
Yeah, there, well, there's several eligible uses for that, for those funds, water and sewer infrastructure too. Um, actually housing is a, as a third that's been added. Lost revenue is included and part of rest, lost revenue is documented, how you spent that lost revenue. And we did that, we did the same thing with our CARES Act funding two years ago. So, I mean, we could go into a lot of detail now if you'd like, but it's really something, I think, with the budget committee. Uh, but we do have funds available for this, trustee Polistreni and beyond that.
Okay, that was my major concern, so thank you.
That has all changed since your meeting last week.
Okay.
I, I know it's also a concern of yours, but on the flip side, if we don't spend this money, we lose it.
Yeah.
So we either pay that a hundred and sixty thousand dollars or we lose almost nine hundred dollars.
No, I'm sorry, there's one other thing I should mention now. There is one alternate that we have put in here, and that's installation of an antique clock that you're all aware of.
Yeah.
I think.
That was one of my questions. Go ahead.
Probably going to answer it right. That was, that was, it's an alternate for the, and it came in at thirty-two thousand dollars for the lone bidder. And uh, so we have included that in this number.
Yeah, that clock has been something that I have wanted to see installed forever.
Sorry, I had.
So you did, I mean, I think we could use the humor.
Well, I was just thinking, if, if it's wide enough, we could get a DeLorean. You know, and then, alright.
I think you're cheap.
Was there a comic book shop here before?
You know, there's a couple of empty buildings on State Street if you want to open.
Well, I was going to say, we're going back.
You can do a comic book with little states. You keep telling jokes.
No, I'm just thinking we could get the baseball card. That we should do this, this would not be a problem, so, just saying.
Just to keep this in mind for, this project is going to fix the infrastructure under State Street as well, so I, I think that this is an investment that even though we're spending a hundred and sixty thousand dollars extra, I think this is a huge investment that we won't get a chance to do.
This festival area goes from basically the banks here to Washington, right?
Right.
Where, where are we putting two hundred and twenty-eight shrubs?
Um, they're about thirty dollars a shrub. There are eight corners in that.
So forty shrubs on a corner?
Uh, yeah, you're doing the math.
Are we counting replacement shrubs or?
I don't think we have any existing shrubs on State Street.
No, 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 I mean, are we replacing them like weekly?
No.
Just in case. We're going to buy some and back up. We're going to plant them in the back of the wastewater treatment plant.
I'm just, when we're saying we're cutting out some of the stuff, I start looking at line items and what costs. And I noticed the streetlights too, that the streetlights were like a hundred and seventy-five K, and I got confused, because I had thought in the original design that the cantilever lights were going to go from the streetlight poles across, if they weren't going to be just a nut, like a double set of poles. So maybe.
No, in fact, the poles are sitting right next to each other in two cases when they, when they were, when the cantilever system.
We can't run it from a light pole to a light pole rather than having separate?
That's one of the creative things that we're considering, but there aren't very many light poles in the festival block. There are probably not enough to, there were ten just for the cantillary system in the festival block.
And we have eleven poles in this.
In three blocks. Eleven poles go all the way on the, the eleven poles extend all the way from Jackson to Washington.
Gotcha, okay.
You just got my point. That's the only thing that you had to add, which is I'm scared it's beyond the festival block. And that's because we wanted to replace the wiring.
So with the, with the extra funds though, wouldn't it now be possible to add some of those things that have been cut back in?
Would be possible if we were a little further along in our budget process.
One's a, well, okay, so here's a question. If we accept the bid and then we, our budget process works out and construction hasn't started, is there an opportunity to add a change order if the board or the village feels that we can spend that funds for that? Or would we be too far along in the process?
No, no, we can answer that question tonight. Um, I would say the answer is probably yes. Tim, I, I know that this isn't the project that you bid, but we would be, we would be dealing with village funds, not, not any grant funds. The grant funds would be entirely obligated tonight.
Right.
So I, I would say that there's a very good chance that we could do that.
Because like the school district as an example, they bid the project for that new school. A few months later, did a change order again, and it was on to the backup before construction needed to start.
I, I would tell you that before we would, we would, uh, before we, uh, before we, we will extract that agreement from the, from the contractor before we issue this bid.
Because if, yeah, I think that I would feel more comfortable with that if there, there's an option that we can.
I don't want you to be overly optimistic, because I think Ms. Lyons was probably thinking that we maybe shouldn't spend all that money. And trustee Polistreni is our chairman of our budget, and he might agree when we, we see all the numbers roll up together next week.
But for intensive purposes of this, this meeting, we can, you're going to look into that.
I think we could at least make sure the mechanism is in place with the, with the contractor, yes.
That's what I'm.
And then you can all discuss that in the budget hearing.
Awesome. Any other questions? Okay.
I was wrong. Uh, trustee, it's only twenty-eight.
Oh, okay, I was trying to do math.
And trustee Kelly, we will look into that before the award is given tomorrow as well. I think it's just, I'm still looking at it.
There's a lot. And trustee Robinson also says that he's off over the summer and he loves planting shrubs.
These are really tiny shrubs.
I was going to say, yeah.
I suggest a garden club. He heard something else.
I will entertain a motion to uh, award the streetscape project to the lowest bidder, Alliance contractors in the amount of uh one million twenty-four, you know what? I can't do this tonight, okay?
One million twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Next panelists.
It's been a day, it's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we all.
Are you going to make the motion or just rip on it? You make the motion, I'll, I'll save it. You make, thank you.
You're very clear.
Be sure to call questions. I'm going to fall asleep right here. Okay, no questions or comments? Mr. Robinson?
Sorry.
Mr. Clerk, can you call the roll please? Ms. Calistreni?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Voder?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Ma?
Aye.
Let's pass by you.
Thank you. At this point, Mr. Mayor, we would ask your consideration of a motion to approve a proposal for a new SCADA system up, excuse me, for SCADA system upgrades with that on, bank for one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, you have quite like the agenda supplement prepared by Josh Ray back at uh, I'm just going to make a brief comment, and then I'm going to ask Josh to go through the details on this. I would call this, uh, I'm not going to call it an emergency appropriation, but I would call it a very urgent one, uh, given the timing and current state of affairs in our world. One of the things I've been hearing the most on the news lately that I, that I pick up on is the threat to public water supply itself is actually um, a target for certain, uh, certain international ad players. We are probably not the target for most of those, but you never know. Small communities have been hit with ransomware, you just don't know who they're going to hit. Friend, friend, sometimes they don't know who they're hitting. Um, so I, this is a concern. We've been operating this one server, this one computer with XP on it, as most of you know XP has not been supported for over two years now by Windows. Uh, we have a backup.
It's been over two years.
It's okay. Okay, it's been two years since we got rid of Windows.
That was when you got rid of Windows seven, two years ago.
But uh, in any event, we have, we have another box, uh, that's actually, it's a duplicate. If anybody were to break into that building and just throw that box in the ground, we would really be in big trouble.
Yeah.
So this will, this will, in addition to giving us essentially the same services we have now on a new platform, with a cloud backup, very secure cloud backup, uh, off-site backup, which is something we've never had before as well for the system. Uh, I do want to give you all a demo. This is a really cool system to operate, to watch operate. I wanted to do it tonight, but we couldn't quite put it together. Um, you can see on one screen all of our pumps and all of our uh, filtration systems throughout both water and sewer systems. It's a really nice system. And it's critical for operating the department, um, utilities department. I got, our guys carry tablets around with them. They can see all these controls. It's all, it's all mechanical, animated, um, mechanics, a software, so it's, it's a really cool system as well. Uh, but Josh, if you could add just a couple of comments, I don't think we're, what's a lot of time, this is really accurate.
Yeah, I don't want to read through the entire comparison chart, but I do just want to note a couple of the key highlights. Um, first of all, the option with BathCon is going to, instead of actually replacing the software, it's going to keep the same software on the same license that the village has been operating, that we're comfortable with, that works very well for the utilities division, and run a virtual computer through Oracle, it's an Oracle system, on current hardware. Uh, so it's essentially going, it's not really Windows XP anymore. It's just tricking the old software into thinking it's on XP, uh, which school systems use, um, uh, other public entities use the same type of technology for, for different applications. Um, as opposed to the cumation option, cumation being the vendor for Wonderware. Uh, their option is to actually upgrade the software uh, and then be able to patch into it whenever they need to, to make updates. Uh, secondarily, as Mr. Hedges noted, there's going to be an off-site cloud backup system with BathCon. So we'll have an onsite server running everything, and then there will be backup in the cloud offsite that we will pay for, twenty-four hundred dollars a year estimated, compared to the cumation option, which has an onsite server and an onsite backup computer. Uh, so that would not include any kind of cloud backup. There would still be internet connected to the system so that they can patch in and make updates, and that's actually somewhat of a risk. Uh, but there's not external backup, so we would not be mitigating that risk of having onsite, uh, onsite risks.
This is a very common solution for aging equipment, automation equipment. The virtualization allows them to, to run what they've been running. The license doesn't expire, that kind of stuff, and it makes it a very secure thing. And then the biggest thing that I'm excited about with this is the cloud backup, because the things that you hear about now with, you know, the companies getting hacked and that kind of stuff, that's just a matter of time before they figure out how to do it to a municipality and then nobody's water flows. And so in this type of solution, that gets backed up and um, I know that we reference Windows XP and it is an outdated system. I was giving Mr. Hedges a hard time, but at the same time, it's, it's it is very, very common to still utilize XP for some of the older automation stuff. It's just, that's what it was written for, and it costs millions of dollars to upgrade your equipment now, because the software isn't compatible. I mean, it's just the way it is.
So is this, this upgrade going to give us the protection we need?
I think so. I, I, I think so. For a decent, for a decent enough price, I think, I think it's perfect. I think that that allows the, it gives the public works guys a little bit more flexibility, because they'll be able to pull it up on a tablet and that kind of stuff. And I think that it's secure enough that everything goes offsite, and I think that to Mr. Hedges' point, if somebody were to break in and want to cause damage and they busted the Windows XP computer that's there, we're going to have a problem. Because you can't even buy a, a hardware now that Windows XP runs on. So.
Thanks for giving everybody the idea. We get this.
You're welcome. A security risk.
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to be adding some security at that.
Yeah.
I have a question. On our, uh, later this evening, when we go through accounts payable, we have forty-five thousand dollars for BathCon to scatter, gather, how do you say that, stuff? How is that related to this project? Uh, not that it's paying for part of this project, but it seems like we're just about to approve a big chunk of change going to a company that's doing an upgrade for.
I'm, I'll grab the BathCon thing to see what that's related to. I mean, they have done work for us for a really long time, I guess.
Do they do it outside of the SCADA system?
Uh, everything is SCADA related.
Okay, with BathCon?
Yes.
The vendor for that.
Yeah.
BathCon is our.
I'm just curious, because the project we're talking about is like a hundred and ten thousand, and then this is forty-five thousand.
It sounds a lot like the first half of it, but I don't think it is.
No. No, BathCon does regular maintenance on our SCADA system all the time, and I do know that our integrator, his name is Bensy, has been installing a new, um, I don't know all the technicalities, but the pieces of equipment that run the system, he's been working on installing those, as well as upgrading, uh, from, uh, what is it, from radio to cellular, uh, communications on certain places throughout the entire, you know, system. It could be.
All of that work is unrelated to, and, and this won't be replacing stuff we're just having done.
Right. Correct.
They had, um, they, did they have cellular before and now they're?
We're, we're converting more to more cellular.
Because I know, I was just curious, because they're shutting off all that 3G network stuff for the.
Yeah, that's part of it, so, yeah.
That was an emergency, that's probably what it is.
Yeah, so they, uh, cell, cellular companies are shutting off 3G, and that's happening, uh, I think by the end of April. So there's a lot of older, like, security alarm and automation that utilize the 3G bands and stuff, so that's another like unfunded mandate that nobody realized that was going on until it started getting out to the news. I mean, people with OnStar, people's security systems, that kind of stuff, it's just going to stop working.
Well, and a lot of it says repair, so it seems.
Laura can go through the power during payables.
Yeah, I think.
It's not, I just, it's not related to this. That's all right. It, it wasn't that we were already moving forward, it was, are we now going to pay stuff, stuff replaced that we just paid to have replaced, is what I was trying to do.
That's a good catch.
Okay, any other questions? Questions related to that? I mean, everything needs upgrades, as we go along. How long is this upgrade going to be effective for?
It's pretty tough to know that.
Yeah, I know it's a good handed question.
Well, I, I would, I would, I don't mean to cut you off.
That's right.
I, I'm saying with, with the virtualization of the machine itself, I mean, that's kind of where we are in, in tech. I mean, you're looking at me funny, Mr. Ma, but I mean, once you virtualize it and you, and you, and you're running it, I mean, you're, until something significant happens and you can't run a virtual machine anymore.
I would say that my, my answer would be until the features of this software become outdated and we need some more bells and whistles.
But then the hardware on the other side of it would also have to be replaced too. So, I mean, your, the software that we have is going to run the current system that we have. And like, I, I would, I don't want to say indefinitely, but it would run. Now, if they do upgrades or something happens and a piece of equipment changes and the software can't talk to that piece of equipment, then we're going to have an issue.
You want me to go out, you want me to go out and start from scratch? You want to go out, you want to go out and start from scratch and buy all the, as you mentioned, the strings and everything that go with the software, it would be closer to three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars if we went to another vendor and started from scratch.
Virtualization breaks the reliance on the hardware itself. So once you virtualize the machine, you can transfer it to newer generations of hardware in minutes. So again, that concern of us to be breaking that physical computer that's in there now, virtualizing it.
See, I didn't get down, if you understand me.
I didn't.
Take your brain out of your body and put it in a new one.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate the, um, the fact that option one gives us multiple device licenses as we currently have, unlike the, um, the other option. And we're talking about twenty-four hundred versus another almost eleven thousand dollars. And we're also getting cloud backup, which is really awesome, so.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposal for scatter system upgrades with BAFCON.
Second.
Any other discussion, questions or comments? Mister clerk, can you call the roll please? Mister Robinson?
Aye.
Miss voter?
Aye.
Mister Kelly?
Aye.
Mister Ma?
Aye.
Miss Paul Street?
Aye.
Let's pass five zero.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, you have in your packets the, uh, February building report and February streets department reporting, which is.
Did we miss, we, we missed, uh, the partial payment?
I'm sorry, the motion. A motion to approve a partial payment to IHC for work completed on the Route seventy-two water main repair project in the sum of eighty thousand six ninety-eight and fifty cents. Um, Mister Paulson is on the, on the screen. If you would like to ask any questions about this.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve a partial payment to IHC for the work completed on Route seventy-two. Any questions, comments, discussion? Mister clerk, can you call the roll please? Miss voter?
Aye.
Mister Kelly?
Aye.
Mister Ma?
Aye.
Miss Paul Street?
Aye.
Mister Robinson?
Aye.
Let's pass five zero. Okay, Mister Hedges?
I will just ask if there's any questions regarding the two monthly reports.
I have one.
Absolutely.
I just, uh, the one, it's actually, it's just a concern. Um, I'm looking at page fifty-one of the report and, and it shows, I mean, I, I love the fact that we can see the overtime and, and the, the regular hours and how much time and the salt and everything else. But I have a concern that we've got employees that are out for seventeen hours on a single day. I, I mean, just to have them behind, you know, the wheel of a truck, a big truck, um, with less than seven hours sleep in a twenty-four hour period, cause you know they, they go home, they're gonna, you know, sit down, they're gonna eat, they're gonna, you know. So I, I'm just a little concerned if we've got, I mean, I understand, you know, if they're out overnight and they come in in the morning, but seventeen hours just seems like a really like unsafe.
Well, it doesn't happen very often, but that does happen and we depend on Dave Stare to make good decisions when those, when those personal decisions have to be made. When those storms, common red guys are on the clock for sixteen hours, so.
I, it's, it's always appreciated that they go the extra mile, but I know that we've had, I, we've had multiple conversations with Dave Stare and his guys over the years. And they really, they, we're not seeing the actual time cards with them like punching out for breaks and that kind of stuff or, or maybe we're paying them to go to sit for a while. I don't know. It doesn't matter at that point. But what I'm getting at is I know that Dave does a really good job kicking the guys out of the truck for a while, having them get something to eat. They eat really well when they're working and that kind of stuff, so.
They cookouts over there sometimes.
So I mean, I just, I understand where you're coming from, but I think that, that, like, I trust that they're doing what they, they're doing and being safe about it.
Yeah, we are staying within the requirements. There are, there are regulations about how long you be behind the wheel.
Right.
We do stay with that. But we certainly appreciate your concern.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a follow-up question on that? Do we, um, I'm assuming these are our guys who have been clocking at a normal time in the morning. Do we make allowances sometimes when they've been out for seventeen hours a day before? So that they might clock.
Of course.
So, um, anytime somebody comes out before their normal seven o'clock starting time, they are paid at an overtime rate.
Right.
And then if at eight hours, um, they're, you know, like, let's say they start at three in the morning, if after eight hours, um, they oftentimes are given the option to go home, um, after the eight hours, you know, a normal workday, not at the normal times, but, you know, if, if that's an option. Um, and then I, I, I think that's part, at least partially addressing one of your questions. And then, um, so if they do go on for the whole time, I mean, certainly they're allowed out of the truck. They take breaks as they need.
Right.
And those types of things.
But let's say that the storm is over, they've done everything they can, the streets are cleared, they go home. They're supposed to be back at seven AM.
Yeah, so let me, so on a typical day, they, they use a, he knows it's happening in the morning. He'll use a frame of spread at three or four in the morning to salt. They'll finish up maybe at ten or eleven and they'll go home. They're not gonna work the rest of the day.
I'm talking about if the storm ends during the night and they've already cleared and they're ready to go home, like it's four AM. They're not coming back at seven, right? Okay, that's all I want to know. That we're making those allowances for.
I mean, right at, during this, during storms like that, especially when they go on for multiple days, their, their only task is to plow. During that time, they're not trying to trim trees or anything else.
Yeah, okay.
And keep the trucks running.
Any questions about, any other questions about the report? Okay, accounts payable.
We asked for a motion to approve the March third, twenty-twenty-two regular accounts payable in the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and three cents.
Question? Oh, any second. Got to tell you. All right, any other questions or comments about the accounts payable?
Yeah, I, I do have one question. Um, there are two different line items that reference legal service for bias yellow easement. And there are a lot of different easements, but just that one deals with the trust have two different payments to two different.
That's, it, the description is incorrect. The one to, the one in South Elgin. Um, it goes to the Gross family. So that is the Gross family.
There were two legal bills.
The, the five fifty-two fifty is the one that goes to the Gross family. The other one.
Is it we covered their legal fees?
We did.
Okay.
Yes.
That was a, that was part of the agreement that we would pay legal fees.
Gotcha, okay.
But only two of them took advantage of that.
Okay.
Okay. We had small, but.
One question, Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Um, just, just one. On page sixty-four, I just wanna make sure this isn't an error, but we've got Vincent Gross and then Vom Semp Gross with the same numbers and the same exact amount. I just wanna make sure it's not a duplicate because of a misspelling. One is V I G R is the vendor and one's V O G R.
It is, that is a duplicate.
Okay.
It's Vincent Gross.
I just saved us five grand.
So, so now does the, uh, accounts payable amount go down five grand?
Yes.
Four thousand nine hundred.
So. All right, so we have first and second, but now we have to change the amount. Does that mean that we need to?
Can I ask for an amendment?
Please. I will ask for an amendment to reflect the low, the new cost of, what is it, one fifty-five five?
Yeah, one. Fifty-five, one, forty-nine hundred dollars. Forty-nine hundred dollars. It's a one fifty, one hundred and five. Oh geez.
One fifty-five, nine forty-one oh three.
Isn't there a math teacher over there somewhere?
No.
Contract time is over six hours.
Can I get, I have to get a first and a second for the amended motion.
Can I?
Can I have an amendment, a first and a second for the amended motion?
Can you amend amendment for the, you had the motion?
Oh, yeah, you made, you made the motion. I'll make the motion to amend.
Okay.
Perfect. You get all that, Captain Clark? All right, great. Okay, so we have first and a second. Again.
When I ask, I'll call the roll, Mr. Police.
I just wanna make sure you were ready.
He's ready.
Mister Kelly?
Aye.
Mister Ma?
Aye.
Miss Paul Street?
Aye.
Mister Robinson?
Aye.
Miss voter?
Aye.
Okay, amend the pass five zero.
Now you have a voting, right? Yes.
Okay. Now can I have a roll call for the original, or for the payment? Please, Ron? Give, give, we, we, we had to amend the motion. We got first and a second for that. Now you gotta call the roll actually. Aye. Miss Paul Street?
Aye.
Mister Robinson?
Aye.
Miss voter?
Aye.
Mister Kelly?
Aye.
Let's pass five zero. Thank you, trustee Paul Street.
Yay.
Okay, EDC.
Uh, we are meeting next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, bated breath, can't wait. Okay, public relations.
Um, no reply at this time, sorry.
That's the question. Public Works. Oh, he's not here either. He's taking a pass. Trustee Paul Street, other than you saving us forty-nine hundred dollars.
I've earned my chairmanship now. The Budget Committee is meeting on March tenth at six-thirty PM. All are invited to come and in addition to our committee uh, members. So we will review the final numbers.
So that being said, is that, that's committee to hold then? Or are we doing, how, how are we hosting that meeting if we're all invited?
It's, it was the same as the last time. It, it says, um, a meeting of the Budget Committee, including a working group of the board.
Perfect. All right, awesome. So we're all invited to come and participate. You don't have to just sit and watch. Okay, new business or other announcements?
Uh, I'd like to say thank you to our village president and trustee Coth for going to read to the kids at preschool on National Read Day.
I did much better reading the book than I did running the feeding tonight.
You did?
Yeah.
Uh, I would like to, my son pointed out that trustee Coth could not read to his class because he had to go fix the roof. He was, he was looking forward to Mr. Toby coming and reading him the book, but he had to go fix the roof at the preschool.
It was, uh.
So Miss Tammy had to fill in.
He, uh, he was in the lobby when I walked in and he goes, "You ain't got nothing on me. I got them all riled up."
Oh, he did. But the kids loved you guys. Great job. Thank you.
I had fun. It was my reading level, so it was green eggs and ham, so I nailed it. Watched it on video. Nailed it. Okay, any other, any other announcements or new business?
Historical Society, Hampshire Historical Society last week had a, uh, an event at the fire station, therefore to give the history of the fire department, very interesting. Got a lot of insight to, from the beginning all the way through to, to now and, uh, they do a marvelous job. Not just fighting fires, a lot of things. Very necessary. Very good presentation.
All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Questions, comments? Mister clerk? Miss Paul Street?
Aye.
Mister Robinson?
Aye.
Miss voter?
Aye.
Mister Kelly?
Aye.
Mister Ma?
Aye.
Let's pass five zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.